...in the call meeting of the city council to be held in
Can you ring up the PPTA?
801 Commerce Street. It's PM Monday, October 7, 2013, for the purpose of a public work session. They're going to go into a closed meeting by order of the mayor.
Yeah, they may be.
PPTA, okay.
Yes.
Mr. Edmonds?
Legislative.
Mr. Lee? Mr. Louie?
Yes.
The senator?
Here.
It's Ryan.
Here.
Mr. Ryan.
Ladies and gentlemen, and Mr. Vice Mayor.
I was wondering if for a second. Were you in charge when you turned the report away?
I wanted to make sure that everybody knows that you're number one.
All right.
We have three items for you tonight. The most important item is that we have our General Assembly delegation here. And Sherri Neal is going to give a brief overview. Then, this is, you know, a conversation among friends, so it's going to be very informal. Imagine that this is your kitchen table, and you've got your neighbors over to chit-chat about things in Richmond. Sherri?
Thank you. Good evening, everybody. Mr. Vice Mayor, members of council, our General Assembly delegation, thank you for coming this evening. Purpose of this portion of our meeting tonight is to just share with you 2014 legislative draft. I sent copies of this to all of you on Friday, so you're to review it before we begin the conversation this evening. The way the meeting is going to proceed is that council and the delegation members will discuss first the statewide and regional public policy issues. There are seven of them, which include a legislative fix to the toll suit, elimination of the BEPO and MMT taxes, street maintenance formula changes, public transit funding for HRT, host cities of VTA equitable funding, and enterprise zones. After that, we would like for our General Assembly members to share with us any issues that they see on the horizon for the 2014 session that we should be aware of or make note of. And then lastly, we'll finish up with the two legislative requests, which are for the economic relief for Portsmouth downtown businesses and improper disposal of tires. So at this point, I'd like to turn it over to Vice Mayor to open up the discussion.
First, I want to thank the delegates for coming. We always look forward to you coming and sharing your legislative wisdom, and we hope you're looking your crystal ball this year and give us some better news than you gave us the last time. And includes you too, Ms. Craig.
Thank you. I'm the woman behind the man.
All right, I like that. And just also let everyone know that I had talked to Senator Lucas a little earlier this afternoon, and she's a little under the weather and also has another very important meeting she had to attend, so she sends her apologies for not being able to be here, but she asked to make sure to forward everything to her so she can have it in the proper time to evaluate it. So with that, Mr. Rowe?
Yes. Any insight for the 2014 General Assembly session that you can give us?
Not until the budget comes out on 17th December.
Well, this is going to be a short meeting.
Yeah, we'll probably know a little bit more, at least on the House side, both Johnny and I. Are you going to the retreat in November?
Yes.
Up in, I think it's in Roanoke.
Roanoke.
We'll get a first glimmer. I have heard, though, that the state is not coming back as fast as in order to get some additional funding. When you look at the traditional models and the input that comes through from actual spending, even though we've done well, I don't think we're projecting a lot of new money. Is that fair to guesstimate? Johnny's not going to say anything. You're a little bit more experienced than I am on the budget. I'm still learning how to.
The problem is.
You're not saying he's older, right?
I said experienced.
No.
We, at the present time, we don't have all the figures in yet, and we don't have the governor's budget, so we don't know where we stand. We will be discussing a lot of problems when we go up to Roanoke, and we'll be getting in a little deeper. We've got to place money into a couple funds that have to go in there, so we don't know exactly where the governor's going and how he's going to put this budget together. As soon as he does that, then we'll have a chance to look at it, and his budget will not be out until December 17th. That's when we'll take a look at it, and then we'll start working on it from that point until we get it out of the House, probably the second week, third week after we're there.
Yeah. I would like to add, but looking at your draft agenda, the one issue, a couple of issues I think we're going to need your support if you choose to, with getting other cities involved, is I've heard a lot of talk about the reintroduction of the BEPO and machinery and tool tax. I'm sure you've already briefed him on that. And most of the talk does not replace the funding that the city of Portsmouth and those cities would lose. There have been some structures that have been recommended, but in my opinion, most of the money that they're talking about being generated to replace it is at the state level and not at the local level. So watch out when you hear the proponents of the bill say that the project, the tax, the new legislation is revenue neutral. It's not necessarily revenue neutral to the cities such as Portsmouth, because we have a disproportionate number of manufacturers and we rely on that funding. So that's going to be one, I think, that is going to be reintroduced. Whether or not it makes it out of committee and gets to the floor, I don't know, but the last time it was defeated, a lot of the help was due to the urban, to the municipality. So that's one I would encourage you to keep your eye on. And in addition to the, we've had meetings on the whole cities with the port. I don't know what's going to come out of that.
Do we want to kind of just go by?
Yeah. So you want to start at top here, just run through them all, one through seven, and then go through our package?
Yeah.
Your insights on those?
John, what dollar amount does that represent for us?
Eleven cents on the tax rate.
Eleven cents on the tax rate if it's removed.
If it was to completely go away.
That was six.
Six point nine.
So, yeah, let's start with the first issue.
Sure, you want it?
Yeah. It's the General Assembly legislative fix to the toll suit. On this one, we're looking at if, in fact, the Supreme Court should uphold the lower court's decision that we would like our delegation to use all legislative means possible to ensure that any such fix does not disproportionately impact the citizens of Portsmouth, as well as any and all users of these facilities. Feedback and chit-chat. Anyone?
Mine is pretty public already, so I'm opposed to the toll.
Yeah, I don't. I mean, I don't think you're going to get a lot of pushback from the three of us up here. We were all opposed. We all co-signed on to the bill that now Senator Alexander introduced. We introduced, as you know, I introduced several bills and studies, and I think there's only one left, but the other bills were all defeated in committee. It just didn't get to the floor, it didn't get to a public vote. I can't speak for the Senate side, but we did introduce at least three bills, trying to even, a couple of bills to generate and to slow it down, but they were mostly killed in committee.
I think the Council would have something related to that.
Yes, sir.
Thank you, Vice Mayor. To the point of the tolls, the old saying, to kill a snake, you got to cut its head off. Well, the head of the toll issue is the PPTA.
Right.
And I was hoping that our package would say, let's amend it, but I keep hearing that that's underway in the General Assembly. Is that indeed the case, so we don't have another governor that could come along and enter into a 58-year agreement like this governor has? Where do we stand on that?
It's up to the court right now.
Well, yeah, I hear that, but is there any move afoot in the General Assembly to amend the Public-Private Transportation Act, so a governor can't do his own negotiating without the consent of the elected officials?
Well, as it stands now, I think the Constitution is pretty clear that only the General Assembly can put a tax on the people. Now, the question's going to be, I think Judge Cales was correct. I think his opinion is correct. The problem is, I don't know whether or not the Supreme Court is going to hold to that, because now this other outfit is coming up with an argument that is foreign to me. I'm just not aware of it. I didn't have anything to do with the suit, but I'm just saying to you, until the Supreme Court rules, we don't know what to expect, because if they rule that this is, in fact, a tax, it really affects a lot of things, not only this project, but there's some in Northern Virginia that it would affect. So I don't know how to answer this question, because I don't know what the Supreme Court's going to do. And secondly, let's assume, for the sake of argument, the Supreme Court says this is a tax. I don't know whether or not the General Assembly will then bring the bill in to say you can do this toll, and whether there's enough support to pass it. In Hampton Roads, I don't know if we're all together or not, but I can't speak for everybody else in Hampton Roads. I'm opposed, I don't think the two tunnels, when I was 12 years old, the first tunnel was built and finished. So I thought that was a separate facility, but as it went in, originally, it was my, well, a little bit of research that I've done on it showed that it was hooked into the federal highway system in order for us to get federal money. And then it went down the road, and as most of you know, Senator Moody, when he was there, fought like crazy to get that toll off. So I don't know where we stand legally until the Supreme Court rules, and then we see what the legislature's going to do and what's going to happen. It's, in my opinion, it's too early to talk about it, because we really don't know where we stand until the Supreme Court makes a decision.
Well, you know, part of the concern is, Virginia is one of the states that is certainly contemplating even tolling the interstates. And to me, that would be even more disastrous.
Well, they have to go to Washington, and Washington has to okay it. They okayed, it's my understanding, they okayed whatever they did to allow the two mergers of the tunnel. I'm not familiar with how it was done. I stayed away from it, because I didn't want to get involved in the suit itself, because then we wouldn't have been able to hear it here in Portsmouth. But I got involved in the actual suit, so any monies that I gave was out of my personal pocket.
Well, one other toll question or related question, the closure of the tunnels, certainly the westbound, is putting Portsmouth under economic stress. And to the point, a group of business owners are contemplating trying to get an injunction, which can be, I understand, a costly process. What can we do, or what can you do as our General Assembly representatives to get somebody within VDOT to have, one of those tubes have two-way traffic, similar to what Midtown already has, instead of just closing it down? Can you all attempt to do that and save our business owners further economic stress?
We can write a letter to VDOT.
The new commissioner.
I don't know whether we can, I think we can try, okay?
Okay.
I don't know what, you know, I don't want to say something just to be saying something, because I don't know, but I have no problem in writing a letter and having a joint letter.
Say, let's send a joint letter.
Yeah, we'll send a joint letter.
That would be great.
I will say, and I'm not defending the answer, but I have had conversations with them, and they've given me the same answer they've given you guys. They claim that it's for safety reasons, it has to go up to a certain level, and they said the only reason you can do it in Midtown is because that is grandfathered. I'm not making this stuff up.
No.
So, I mean, I have had conversations with.
Bureaucratic gobbledygook.
So I'll be glad to join in on a joint letter.
But shouldn't one of those tubes be grandfathered if that's the case also?
No, they can't do it now. If it was already happening, as it is in the Midtown.
Well, it was happening before.
Well, I'm.
Oh, and they switched it to two lanes, correct?
As my father used to say, you're preaching to the choir. I understand completely.
Anyway, the letter, a joint letter from our delegation, I think would carry a lot of weight.
It might be even better if we sent it to Secretary of Transportation.
John Kanaugh.
Yes.
And maybe, my colleagues, maybe if we would do a resolution supporting that from our position as well tomorrow night. What do you think, Vice Mayor?
We have the letter. Can we get a petition?
Yeah.
Sure.
John wrote, or the mayor wrote?
Yeah, I wrote it.
A letter, but about a resolution from the entire council.
I mean, take it right from his letter.
Absolutely.
If you could do it to the governor and to the Secretary of Transportation.
Can we have that by tomorrow?
We can, the governor and the Secretary of Transportation.
And if you could get it to me by close of business tomorrow, first thing Wednesday, I have a meeting, I'll hand-deliver it to.
It'd be first thing Wednesday, because we won't wait to act on it till tomorrow night.
Okay. Are you coming up for the meeting on Wednesday?
Which meeting?
Special General Laws Subcommittee on the Virginia Procurement Act.
I'd look at it, I hadn't decided whether I was going to make it or not.
Try to make it if you can.
Okay, well, yes, I guess I'll make it.
We'll get it.
Sure have it first thing Wednesday morning.
Yes, I'll be there.
Thank you.
Okay. Are we good with that one? Moving on to number two, elimination, and we kind of touched on that already.
Yeah, let's go to three.
Okay, moving on to three, the street maintenance formula changes. That's been a pretty big issue for localities that maintain their own streets.
I think I missed, I want to. It's four.
Yeah, page four.
I'm sorry.
Okay.
It's six, number four.
Six.
This is the one you wrote, a letter saying the valuation it gave you was wrong?
Right.
If you were wanting to.
There was a recent meeting of the Commonwealth Transportation Board, which three members of the board indicated that local governments were not good stewards of the lane mileage. And not only did we differ with that opinion, but all of our neighboring cities. We get so many pennies per mile, lane miles, and it's not adequate. In fact, it falls short by more than $6 million. We spend, in addition to whatever VDOT gives us, we spend another $6.3 million on our road maintenance. So any notion to change the formula that would decrease the amount of money that comes to local government, it's not smart. I mean, this is really what keeps our roads travelable, and even with this meager amount of money that they give us, we have to supplement it. So if you'll be vigilant, and in the attempt to change the formula down for any reason, let us know, and we'll help you fight it.
Keep it down.
Is this going to be?
Is this part of the problem with the trucks coming in?
Well, it's.
Well, the trucks definitely take a toll on the road.
Yeah.
And we're not getting any money back.
Not getting nothing.
I noticed you all have another position on that particular thing, but we're not getting our share, what I think is a fair share, of the money as a result of the trucks that are being used. Now I see some of them coming down High Street when I come into work in the morning.
They come off the Martin Luther King and go up, and then make a right on Highway, or they go up to Turnpike and make a right, and then go up and get on Interstate at Frederick.
A lot of them coming back, though, are coming down Frederick Airlines and shooting down High Street. Turning left right up there at the railroad tracks.
You figure with the amount of trucks that come through the city of 80,000, these streets are, you know, they're made for that, but not a thousand trucks a day, or 500 trucks a day that we're getting.
But this is citywide. I mean, the amount of money that we get from VDOT for the maintenance of all of our streets is not adequate, and, yeah.
Blocks long, and you waste, and the money's gone.
We pay 36% over, 36% more than what we receive from the state. And we're not, we're not unique statewide. All localities that maintain their roads are paying more than 30% over what we're giving by the state.
It's like one loses one sense of reality when you sit at the Commonwealth Transportation Board and get into a kind of a corporate discussion, the local governments are not using this money wisely. Well, shame on them. We are, and not only are we using it wisely, but we need more money.
All right, the next one. Public transit funding for HRT, Hampton Roads Transit Authority. As you guys well know, House Bill 2313 was passed, the transportation bill. There was, in that bill, Northern Virginia was given the ability to use some of their funds for transit. Hampton Roads was not given that ability. HRT needs a dedicated source of funding that they can rely upon. They're, because, as you well know, their funding comes from three or four different means, from the federal government, from the state government. They get a little bit from the fare box, but the lion's share of their money comes from local governments. And whenever they need to make an improvement, or they have to do something as far as their operating costs, they have to, they come back to us for more and more money, because they don't have a dedicated source of funding. So the Hampton Roads Transportation Planning Organization, the legislative ad hoc group, have come together, and we've kind of talked about it. They are supporting a J-LOC study, another J-LOC study, to look at the equity of transportation funding. We're, of course, going to support that notion, but we also say, advocate that House Bill 2313 should be amended to allow for some of the transit, that money, that's the new transit money, to go to transit. It's going to take a while before the mega project can be built in our area and to build that amount of money. In the meantime, if we could help HRT by providing them a dedicated source of revenue, then we could also help mitigate congestion in the area in due time. Keep it down.
I don't envy William Harrell. I love him dearly, but he's faced with particularly a route that is multi-jurisdictional. You may have one locality that's willing to pay, another one that says no, and if you have a resident that lives in Portsmouth commuting to the naval base, we may want more frequency for the benefit of our citizens, but once it gets in Norfolk, Norfolk's got to pick up the deficit, and Norfolk doesn't want to do it, then it really puts Wim in a very precarious situation. He cannot provide the service. And so the way to get this unshackled is for there to be another revenue stream that's not geared to the local governments. This has been an age-old problem for HRT since the Transportation District was created back in 1974, when it was called the Tri-Water Transportation District Commission. And I know that you guys are aware of this.
But I, one thing I'd just like to add in here, there is a significant statement in this fourth paragraph here in this paper here when we look at House Bill 2313, and the significant and the impact it's going to have on the Hampton Roads transportation area. Read through there, while this is a great and so needed revenue stream from HRT, it still falls short of having a reliable, recurrent, consistent revenue stream. So this is not going to resolve anything with what we have stuck in at this point. That's a significant statement there, and I think we need to zero in on it to see what ramifications are. Sherri, what can we do to help to alleviate the impact, because we are going to greatly be impacted as a result of that one deal?
Thank you, Councilwoman Randall. House Bill 2070, that was the bill that passed that's dealing with the transit funds, the new money that's being raised out of 2313. They're going to, they, what was decided by the General Assembly, you guys, is that you created a TISDA transportation service advisory, committee, yeah. What they're looking at is coming up with performance measures by which the new money over $160 million will be first-person, portioned out, portioned out amongst the different transit companies. So that's something, that's money they're going to get, but it's based on your performance operations, so it's extra money, but it doesn't give them that dedicated revenue source that they can consistently rely on, right?
Is Suffolk still a part of?
That we're looking for.
Yeah, that we're looking for.
They're not part of HRT any longer, are they?
Well, Suffolk's all out.
They've come to the board now.
Well, you know, in looking at their vehicles, and I've seen them here lately, I think they've gone about it the right way. I think, and I still support this, because, you know, we've got to have public transportation.
That's right.
But for way too long, up until, you know, light rail, HRT is still trying to operate vehicles like they were in the '40s. And if you look at these 40-ton buses riding around town, it's usually not enough people on them that could fit in a passenger van.
That's right.
And I think we need to look at Suffolk's model. I know we paid, what, over $2 million, John, to HRT? I'd like to know, because Suffolk's got a lot more miles than we do they have to travel. I'd like to see what their cost per mile for their public transportation is compared to what we're giving HRT.
We'll do that. Good points.
Quick question, Sherri, City Manager. Are you talking about amending the Hampton Roads portion of 2013?
Yes.
To include some dedicated money for, right now, as I understand it, it's only new construction projects?
Correct.
Okay. Now, also, isn't there some additional money that was in the overall bill, that 3% that goes to, is that the 160?
That's, yeah, that comes out of 2070.
Okay.
So that's anything over 160.
I think one thing that would help, at least me, is when you get to, if you want to do a J-LOC, is to somehow, you know, and you've heard me say this before, my biggest challenge with VDOT right now, and William Harrell, and I love him, but when you look at the region, if we want to be a region, I totally agree, we should have a regional funding stream, but we should also have a regional funding plan. And that plan should be multimodal in the sense that other urban areas like ours do a lot more efficient use of buses, they do a lot more efficient things that we could do that don't necessarily cost as much as the light rail will cost. But maybe I haven't seen it, but I haven't seen a, just a schematic plan as to when we get there, what will our transportation system look like? And not just in the city of Portsmouth, in the region as a whole. And I think somebody, hopefully William's thinking about this, and I know he'll say he doesn't have the funding, but to me, if you don't have the funding and you haven't thought about what you're going to need, it's hard to defend.
That's right.
So that's my two cents.
That's good. And we'll reemphasize that with William also.
Thank you. All right, moving on to number, the sixth item, or the fifth item, rather, the host cities of the VPA, the Virginia Port Authority Equitable Funding, and this is something that you guys are very familiar with, so we don't have to stay a long time on that. The, our sister host cities have decided that they would like to approach this matter, again, this upcoming General Assembly session, to see if we can either get the new formula fully funded, or to get some sort of more equitable funding for the host cities of the port.
Which one you guys think is more likely, and what would you recommend of the two options?
Can everybody speak at one time?
Say again the two options, what were the two options again?
Full funding of the new formula from the 2000 legislation that Senator Quell had patented, or some other more equitable way to fund the host cities of the port.
So, because you have a mechanism there already, we're just having to fund it?
Correct.
Like unfunded mandate?
Nephant funded.
It's unfunded mandate.
Mm-hmm. I don't, I'll speak, I don't think the first option. I think it's going to be extremely challenging for us, as much as I agree with it, to try to get any new dedicated revenue stream out of the general fund. dedicated revenue stream out of the general fund next year, short of whichever gentleman wins the governorship doing something with an executive order. I just don't see the votes there. I mean, I personally have gone to some of my counterparts, and I know Johnny has too, and showed them the Virginia Port Authority map, and talk about an economic engine, and talk about how a distribution center in Roanoke, if it can't get the product there. But when it hits the floor, they're looking at it in the sense that we're taking money out of their public education schools, out of their other, and it's an uphill challenge to get them to change their vote.
And in addition to that, another problem is, you talk to, let's say, Tech, and Blacksburg would want tax exemption reinstated. You'd want payment lieu taxes for the school, all the public colleges, all the state parks. There's so many things in the state that people that are in counties, that they'd want the same thing. And they say to you, "Well, why should you get extra money when, you know, you're not paying taxes on the land?" We are. We've got it off the books. We don't pay any money at all. And this is the argument coming from a majority of the members.
We can make that argument about the whole port.
Well, the problem is, they're giving part of the money now. You don't know how much of a problem it was just to get a few dollars to the city to get back here. We put a bill in for a lot more money, and we wound up with 95 than the one that I put in, 2,000, whatever it was, four or five. But the problem is, all these other areas in the state are going to say, "Hey, you know, why just the port? Why can't I have my school, why can't I tax the school land, the property? Why can't I tax the state parks? Why can't..." You've got some counties out there that, half the county's a state park. You have no taxes at all on it. What do you tell those people?
Half of Portsmouth is...
Oh, you made it long.
Not arguing. That's why they don't want to, that's why they don't want to give it to us, okay? I'm just saying to you that that's one of the arguments that you face with all the members of the House or the Senate. When you get in there and start talking about this, they're not going to give up money to Portsmouth just so that we can get some more money. I mean, it just don't work that, it's, you know, it's kind of hard. You got to, you got to give them something in return, and there's nothing to give in return. You know, if we continue to ask and ask and ask, we're going to get cut off on everything. I'm just saying to you that it's hard when you're talking to 100 members, and you try to justify, "Well, we want more money because of the port being here." And they say, "Well, I want more money because I got, in Blacksburg, I got Tech on my back, and I can't tax any of that property."
So, you don't think either one of these are viable? Either one of these options are viable?
I don't know about the second one. I haven't, I haven't looked at the second one.
Yes, well, that one's new to me. I have to look at it, too. I mean, and don't get us, we're not saying we won't fight for it. We're just saying it's going to be extremely challenging. As Johnny said, you know, you guys have heard me say this before, the good news about getting elected to the House is, you got to vote. The bad news is, you only got one. You need 50 other people to agree with you. And a lot of those conversations occur on the floor. Johnny's well aware of it, and you just have to barter and pull coalitions together and scrape up another 50 people to vote affirmatively with you. And that's if you're lucky enough to get it out of committee.
We understand. It's hard to get full on a lot of things, so we got, I got you.
I didn't want to go there.
All right, the next issue is opportunity educational institution. In this past General Assembly session, passage of Senate Bill 1324 with accompanying budget amendments created the opportunity educational institution. Under this bill, any school that's denied accreditation shall be transferred to the OEI, and the transfer is supposed to begin occurring under 2013, 2014. The transfers of the schools will mean that not only all state funding, all local funding, all funding associated with the schools goes to OEI. We fought vehemently against this during the General Assembly. We've got some of the stuff killed. We got the Constitution Amendment killed that you got, that they were trying to pass. Currently, as you know, Norfolk has a lawsuit. Virginia School Board Association has joined them in that lawsuit. Virginia Municipally, Virginia First Cities, City of Portsmouth, and we're saying that we support the delay of any OEI being actually implemented until after the results of the lawsuit comes back, as well as there's a J-LOC study for absence of approving low-performance schools, and that's going to be released in June of 2014. So, we're asking that you, whatever you can do to...
Delay that?
Yeah, to delay implementation of the OEI.
How many schools are affected in Portsmouth?
No.
10.
That you would, you could possibly lose?
We could lose accreditation.
Can I ask a question? As I was going through this earlier, I was looking at it, can somebody tell me why 10 of 19 schools aren't accredited?
What, the standards of learnings changed last year, and a lot of the schools have fell behind. We didn't have that many before, but when they changed it and they made them harder, and they were saying that they have to teach to these tests now, and that's kind of what threw everybody behind.
New rigor came in for mathematics, science, and it's put all the schools, even Chesapeake, had to...
That's a question for the school board, really.
I didn't know whether they reported to y'all why they were all...
They don't, they elect a body.
Yeah, that's a...
They all give money. I mean, we give the money to y'all, and y'all give it to them.
That's right.
It's like a war zone when they're all in.
There's no report. We have the report. Nine schools accredited with warning. That's the report.
Is that fair to say?
It's fair to say.
10 or not?
10.
Fully accredited.
It's over 50%.
Of the number of schools.
50%. I was told, our first meeting, that it took 12 years to make a passing student. Next year will be his 12th year as superintendent.
Do what?
David Stupwich.
I'll do that.
David Stupwich.
Oh, okay.
I think we need to move on.
All right, the last, go ahead.
Go ahead. Enterprise zones.
Yeah, enterprise zones is the next, the next one. Enterprise zones have been a very successful program for distressed localities. Enforcement has been very successful with their zones. As a matter of fact, we just recently applied for one of the four zones that were open this year. As you know, there were 57 zones. In 2005, the state reduced that to 30. The problem is, at this point, that we have localities that have pockets of distress and not citywide distress, and they would like to get in on this particular program. So, there's been legislation that's been introduced over the last couple of years to try to address that issue. Expanding the program to include localities with just pockets of distress without, and expanding the money is going to dilute the program. It's going to make it more competitive because we're already down to, I believe, 30 zones. So, what we're saying here is that we do not support expanding of these zones without any increased funding level program. And if, if there is going to be an expansion, then it should be a bifurcated system, perhaps, where you've got one for distressed communities and the other one for communities that have pockets. Okay?
These are the macro issues, and then we have two items for our legislative package. This is the ASK. Why don't we take B first? Because B's kind of a technical...
Okay. B is improper disposal tires. This was brought to me by a member of our fire department. Problem with dumping of tires illegally, and he said, he brought to my attention that there's been some problems in trying to identify who is responsible for permitting. DEQ doesn't have police powers. When you go to the section of the code, it does speak to the fact that any person who is in this type of business is supposed to not be speculatively accumulating tires. The ASK here is for more, for better clarification for the language, so that you're asking, the language to state that the person who is in this business of 1,500 tires or less, which is usually permitted by DMV, that they have to have a record of when they dispose of the tires and where they dispose of the tires. So, that's the ASK for that amendment in the code.
This is a public safety measure. As these tires accumulate and not disposed of properly, they create all sorts of problems for the community. Which brings us to our second ASK, which is the economic relief for the downtown businesses, and that, we touched upon that. Your help in getting BDOT to give us some relief. Two-way traffic in the tunnels makes a lot of sense. If there are safety hazards, come up with a way, or concerns to mitigate that. Look at alternative ways. Don't close for the whole weekend. I mean, they may, they'll do roadway repair work from 11 to 4. Why not do the same thing in the tunnel?
Would letters make recommendations to them?
Yes.
Okay.
Yes, sir. We got it.
Thanks.
I'm looking at the copy of the letters you sent, John.
Right.
We need to make sure they have a copy of...
They were copied. I will make sure that they have a copy. We sent a letter to the members of the Commonwealth Transportation Board that represent this area, asking them to intervene. And we've heard back from Arbery Lane.
About Hollis?
Again. Arbery said he had called the Secretary of Transportation, the Commissioner of BDOT, and the local district manager, saying, "Why can't this be done?" And if it's because of safety reasons, what mitigating measures can you take?
Did Arbery get an answer? Because he's pretty...
No, not yet.
Got a lot of power up there, okay.
Not yet.
Usually can get an answer.
Question, did they, did they tell your staff, give you any indication that they were going to use this method of repair before they announced it publicly?
They did. I mean, they had...
To prepare, yeah. Curious.
But they, they advanced it. They advanced the calendar quite a bit. These closures came earlier than what was originally scheduled.
And how long is it supposed to go through?
Oh, golly. It goes through May of next year.
It's going to do the holiday season?
Yeah. You hit every season of the year, and every shopping season of the year. And so, each weekend is separate and distinct. But we have businesses that are suffering as much as 30%, 27% to 30% loss in revenue, comparing a closed weekend to the same weekend the year before.
Anything else from the councilman? Questions?
I would just like to say, thank you all for having me here. Senator Cosgrove is...
Mr. President.
I got one more thing I'd like to add. I just got a text from Mayor Wright, and he asked me if I would read this to the council and to the delegation that's here. Just met with Governor McDonnell. We agreed to disagree on the tunnel deal. He understood our position, but said we needed to do something. I made him aware of the tunnel closure on weekends and its impact on our businesses. He seemed surprised, and then called over his chief of staff, Martin Kent, asked me to explain it again, and then directed him to look into it. Martin Kent said that he would contact Transportation Secretary and get back with me. Please announce this in the meeting to the council and the delegation that's there. Thanks, Mayor Wright.
I think we still need to go ahead with y'all's letter, given past history.
Thank you, Councilman. Appreciate it.
Good thing he was able to hear it.
Ms. Craig?
I just wanted to thank everyone for allowing me to attend. Senator Cosgrove is at another event. We now represent seven localities, so we're, we're stretched thin. I do know that Delegate, Senator Cosgrove, sorry, is going to be attending these, we're going to be attending the Senate Finance Retreat in November, and you'll be attending your retreat. We'll know a little bit more about where the Commonwealth is going to stand, but again, 17th of December is probably the best date to go by. We do feel that Senator Cosgrove will probably stay on transportation. He was vice chairman in the House, so we're hoping that he'll stay on transportation in the Senate. He doesn't, he opposes the tunnel tolls, and he's very knowledgeable of the, of the transportation problems in the Hampton Roads area. As far as the other committees, we're not sure. We won't know probably until December, maybe January earliest. But we'll work with Sherry Neal very closely. I will talk to him about the joint letter tonight. I can't imagine him not wanting to jump on. I have talked to a lot of businesses. I've lived here my whole life. I frequent the Cafe Europa, and they've, they've noticed a huge, you know, decline, and so have the other ones. And, you know, that, that's something we don't need. We're going backwards if we continue this for the next, what, eight months, as far as those tunnel closures, so.
We certainly want to thank you for being here and keep frequenting our establishments.
Yes, sir, I will.
Bring your friends and family.
Yes, sir.
We have a couple of things we want to ask you if you, if you would pass on to us. First one is a, is a letter to Senator Blevins. And I'm going to read it.
Yes, sir.
Dear Senator Blevins, as Mayor of the city of Portsmouth, on behalf of my council colleagues, please accept our gratitude for your many years of service to the Commonwealth of Virginia as a statesman and outstanding educator. Virginia is all the better for your dedicated services, and although you were representative for a short time period, your kind consideration and support to our issues were greatly appreciated. I am confident that your family, friends, and colleagues and constituents share in the deep sense of pride that I feel for your service. It is my hope that your retirement years are blessed with good health, great happiness, and much joy in all your future endeavors. Cela, Kennedy F. Wright, Mayor of the city of Portsmouth. That's the first one. And to welcome Senator Cosgrove, all the delegation have one of these.
A flag.
We want to make sure he has one too, and let it by the stewardess. So, we expect to see this.
It will be.
We're going to be the biggest one we can find.
That's what we're going to pull.
He will have the seven. And we do have the flags going on our doors. We will get the flag. Thank you so much.
Yes.
Well, thank you, guys, for coming.
Thank you.
I want to take a short break, folks.
Yes.
Watch out, that thing hurts.
It's just a hard strike.
I can use it for a weapon, enough.
I know.
We have two more items. The first is Elliott Avenue. Back in August, August 13th, we actually briefed you all, and you asked us to implement a civic engagement process where we could get feedback from the community. And we've done that, and we're here to report on the results and to give you a recommendation so that we can get some guidance from you.
Thanks, John. Good evening, Mr. Vice Mayor, members of the council. This is, as John mentioned, just an update following back up on the items we initiated it back in August. We did take the options for disposition of this property to the Highland-Biltmore Civic League, and they gave us their feedback after a couple of meetings. So, I'm going to give you a little background on the property and the former lease and the options that I presented it to them, and what their recommendations are. First, just to orient you to the property, it is the, this athletic field here, which is next to Portsmouth Christian School and Biltmore Baptist Church along Elliott Avenue. This is in the Highland-Biltmore neighborhood. And as we mentioned previously, there was a lease that the city entered into with Biltmore Baptist Church and Portsmouth Christian School in 1993, 20 years ago, following up an RFP for a solicitation for proposals to maintain the field. It's always been in city ownership prior to 1993. It had fallen into a state of unmaintenance, was not maintained, and so this was an option that the city perceived at the time. And beginning in 1993, and until the expiration of that lease in March of this year, Biltmore Baptist Church maintained the property by that lease. They had access to it according to a schedule that was in accordance to the lease. It'll, the lease allowed the city to cancel it at any time during that 20-year period. And had we done that, there was a depreciation schedule for the improvements that they had made to the property. We would have had to pay them some portion of those depreciated improvements. We would have had to pay them some portion of those depreciated improvements. During that period of time, the church and the school installed athletic field lights, scoreboard, and irrigation system. They estimate the cost of, or the value of those improvements over that period of time would be somewhere between $250,000 and $300,000. Most recently, the field has been used as, for football and soccer. And it is a city field. It is open to the public, but certainly the drive-by perception is it's owned and controlled by Portsmouth Christian School. And to take you back to where we are now, at your work session in August, you asked me to take some options for future disposition of the property to the neighborhood, to the Highland-Biltmore Civic League. We did that. I presented the options for their discussion and questions at their August meeting and at their September meeting. And to sort of jump ahead, their conclusion at the September meeting was to say they have enjoyed a good relationship with the school as a neighbor, and they would like the city to continue the lease arrangement, if possible, with the school. So just a few more things about the property. Again, this is a closer-up view than before. You can see, and this is from an aerial photo probably a couple of years ago in the winter, so the grass isn't growing, but you can see from this the athletic field lights that they've installed, bleachers, a press box, and some other amenities. And of course, you can see faintly the red outline, which defines that property separate from the church and school property. There's also, it's important to know, there are two primary access points to the field. One is really the most public access is right here on the sidewalk down here in this corner. There's a pedestrian gate. And then there's a facility gate, which is much larger here off the parking lot from the school. And then this just shows some of the improvements, the fencing, the goalposts, the scoreboard in the background there. This shows the press box, some of the bleachers that they've installed, as well as some of the mobile units. And then behind that press box, they've put in a tot lot. Again, the lease expired earlier this year. We began to talk about how to go forward really back in the winter, but have not decided how to do that. And so just by default, the previous arrangement with the school has just continued. They've been able to use it for their false force this year. And so we had three options for consideration. One, a new lease proposal. Two, to sell the property. Or three, for the city to take the property back into its inventory of athletic fields and assume full maintenance and management of the property. Some of the things we talked about in option one would be to negotiate a new lease for the field use. And under a Virginia code, we could enter into a five-year initial term with renewals for up to five additional years. And that would, in that lease agreement, we could spell out how the leasing would use the field. We would prescribe that there would need to be public access maintained. And before we entered into any sort of new lease with the school, we would need to post a public notice of intent to negotiate the lease.
Let's get a question for you.
On the lease, the leasing must allow public access. If they're entering a lease with the city, they're going to have to insure that property, correct?
They will.
There are provisions in the lease agreement that they carry liability insurance. Now, those are.
So shouldn't they be able to control the field if we're giving them access?
Well.
Because I'm just saying, I'm not, if you got some vandalism going on, or kids out there on the weekends tearing up their concession stand, or lights, or chairs, bleachers.
Excuse me. This tries to create a win-win situation where they have the use, and like Brandon said, from the street, it looks like it is associated with school. But when the school's not using it, it becomes an athletic facility or a field for public use. So it's trying to create a win-win situation. Those were the high points. I mean, the lease, of course, would have all the appropriate language in there about liability and the insurance that they've got to carry on the property.
Your point is well taken, and that issue did arise in this previous 20 years where after they reseated it or did some.
There were four-wheelers in there one time.
Right. And so through arrangement with the city, through coordination with Parks and Rec, we gave them permission to close the gates and keep that closed while they restored the turf. And that arrangement can be articulated in the lease, and I think that's something we should continue.
Councilman, I have something for you.
Yeah, I have a couple of things. First, has the church been involved in this as far as understanding that their lease is up and that there are some options? You haven't done that yet, right?
Yes, sir.
It has been done?
They, we have been corresponding with the church, Reverend Frye, as well as the school administration. And then they participated in the Highland-Biltmore Civic League discussions several months ago.
My other comment is, they've done a great job with keeping that land up. It looks great, and they've leased it for these 20 years. I think we, I feel like that we ought to continue the leasing if they're willing to do it, but also offer them the option if they would want to buy it, to buy it as well. But I think they ought to continue with that lease. They've done a great job with it. It's beneficial. And if they are going to lease it, I think some stipulation ought to be there that they ought to be able to control via their insurance or whatnot, accessibility as well.
Yes, sir.
Mr. Moody?
Thank you, Vice Mayor. I'm good with the Civic League's recommendation. I think Biltmore Baptist done an excellent job, but I would want to do it through the lease, not to sell the property. But I do think if there's going to be a public piece, there needs to be some posting of whom to contact. When an organized group wants to use the field for whatever, there should be a process that they can go through to get access to the field. I'm not for just opening it up, as Councilman Meeks said in the past, the four-wheelers and different people. A football field is special use, and, you know, it's not meant to be used by four-wheelers and whatever. So if we could post through the lease, make it a requirement that they post a contact on who to contact for organized events.
And it sounds like they have a bigger relationship with the Civic League.
They do.
So maybe they can establish a point of contact between the two of them for those kind of activities that he's talking about.
We're not trying to negotiate the lease tonight.
No, no, no. You're just getting.
We're trying to find out what your preference is, and we would bring the lease back to you for your consideration.
Bishop's got something that I'll.
Well, I still think a lease to them with the option if they want to buy it, it should be something because they've proven themselves to be credible over the 20-year period. And if we're not using the land, I think it'll be a good move for them to have an opportunity if they choose to.
The downside of that, and when I get into some of the pros and cons, is you, once you sell it to them, then there really is no public access at that point. At least in this lease arrangement, there is times during the summer, there are times during the summer and during the off-seasons when, through that pedestrian gate that I've pointed out to you, you know, pickup gains can occur, and the school has no issue with that, and that seems to work well for the neighborhood. So there's a public access.
Can you click back to the pitch at the aerial, please?
Sure.
That one or the bigger?
Yeah, no, that one right there. You have no, I mean, I guess, you don't have no public parking. I mean, you have a little bit outside, but you'll be on their property. And that's why, I mean, we're asking them to take care of the property. They've been good stewards of the property.
This is a right-of-way here outside of the red line, and that's where, when they have football games, that's where the parking is used, and that's really a public access parking there.
Plus nighttime, obviously, the church parking and the school parking is available as well.
I say you give them total control if you can give them the lease.
Okay. Well, let me just quickly run through the pros and cons as.
Do we just kill our point?
If we continue a lease proposal.
We can.
I'm sorry about that. You've hit most of the points. We continue to have public access to a field that's maintained by the school at no cost to the taxpayers. The school gets to use a piece of property that they've made a considerable private investment in, and of course, as I said, it's supported by the Highland-Biltmore Civic League. The only cons are really there, there could be potentially conflicts between scheduled activities by the school and a desire for the public to use it.
That's right.
Not if they control the use of it. In other words, if you have to contact the school for the use, that eliminates that.
And, but we're just pointing out that that's a potential conflict, which could be incorporated into the contract.
Yeah.
What we want to do is find out which of these three alternatives you want us to
work on, and then we'll start putting the details, we'll put the flesh on that alternative.
The past lease arrangement worked for 20 years, pretty good shape. They made a lot of improvements, so I think Civic League's right, you know, continue with the lease, but just have a public element there that you can contact the school to schedule organized public events.
Well, that's our recommendation. I mean, we can shorten this presentation if that's what.
Yeah.
I just have one comment because I remember that area quite well, having taught through the area. I think we need to make sure that it's open for public use through whoever's going to be in charge and management. And what I'm speaking to, because for years that was off limits. So I've worked over in the area, at the Highland-Biltmore area, and one of the things that I found, it was restricted in terms of who could and who could not use it. And I want to make sure that it is inclusive in whichever way it is set up, and that the city in some way ensure that there are opportunities for all to have access with it. Because that was not the original proposal. I've worked at Highland-Biltmore Elementary School, and it was off limits. Okay? So I just want to make sure it's open and it's accessible for all.
That's where.
It's maintained through the church.
Highlanders Little League ball fields are there, right?
Two of them.
Yes, yes, yes. Right in there.
I think we have consensus.
Yeah.
So work it on the lease and bring it back.
Make sure it's clear.
Yes.
All right.
I just want to make sure.
The next item is Burton's Point. This formally puts together what we've been talking about for several months. We're at a point where the schools have vacated the property. They still own the property. And as Nita will show you, there are some deed restrictions. And even if there were no deed restrictions, before property is conveyed, we do diligence to make sure that it's not environmentally challenged. That property is, and there's a way forward to solve that environmental challenge. Nita?
Okay. Good evening. I am really pleased to be able to talk with you about the Burton's Point property. I've been working on this particular project since 2007, so from both sides, the schools and now the city side. And the reason why it really is important to the city is because when the schools pretty much abandon a property, they no longer have use for it, transfers to the city, and that's really an issue that we have to deal with here. Just in case you guys don't know where this property is located, we have the Jordan Bridge, and at the very foot of the bridge, the bridge crosses over Burton's Point. So here, Burton's Point wrote, so here is where the school's property is located. And so to the north is the Atlantic Metracast property. Below it, and then to the southeast is property owned by the Vane Brothers, and then you have Accurate Marine. Along here, this is just a paper road. The road actually turns and goes down towards Accurate Marine. Then you have the shipyard. This property is Navy property as well, and this is a Superfund site, and as well as the Atlantic Wood property is a Superfund site. And the school's property was once owned by the Navy. Just to give you a little bit of background that leads up to the proposal that I want to cover with you today. First, the schools had this property deeded to them in 1962 by the Department of Health, Education, and Welfare. And there's some restrictive covenants in this deed that are problematic for the schools. First, the property can be taken back by the Navy at any time. And then secondly, the property cannot be released to any other entity without approval of the federal government. The legal department is working on trying to get some of these restrictive covenants released from the deed, and that's going to take approximately a year. The property actually served the operations department, and on that site, it not only had just administrative staff, but it was its warehousing, the fleet maintenance, and the parking lot for about a third of the Yellow Fleet. As I had shown you earlier, you have the Atlantic Wood Superfund site at the north of the property and the Navy landfill site to the west. And environmental tests that have been conducted by the EPA through several borings showed that there was creosote and fuel oil on the property, significant levels. The creosote was actually remediated this past spring, and that remediation has been complete, but there's still several other contaminants with the fuel oil being the predominant issue. The property is going to be vacated within the next six months. The operations staff from the school system has already moved to Clark, but Dennis is actually going to be taking over, well, he's taken over this year, starting July 1, the bus maintenance. And the bid for the six bays for the Frederick Boulevard site should close tomorrow. Hopefully, you think maybe January, February, we should have that completed. And so within the next six months, we do believe that all of the vehicle maintenance for the schools will be at the Frederick Boulevard site. Here's where it gets a little bit interesting for the schools and for the city in terms of the value of the property. The taxable value is a little bit more than 1.3 million. The land value, you can look at it, the land value is about 411, and the building is 922,000. But the market value is virtually zero because of the cost to clean up the property. No one's really going to buy a property that has that kind of contamination on it. In talking with Dr. Stuckish, the schools really do not want to keep the property. And in discussions with Mr. Rowe, the city really doesn't have a need to own the property, so it's kind of hanging out there to find someone to sell it. So the biggest issue is it's three to five million to clean up this property. And that's definitely a large amount of money to clean it up when you look at the value of the property.
And we didn't put this up there?
No. The property was actually conveyed with many of the contaminants already on it when it was conveyed by the Navy.
Nita, go back to that other.
That's right.
If this was a private transaction, let's say that the property owner was selling this property, the prospective buyer would do their due diligence to make sure that it was environmentally clean. Well, we know from what Nita just told you that it's not. And so in order to clean up the property, it's going to cost anywhere between three to five million dollars to do that. Right adjacent to the property is a landfill that's being operated by EPA, where they're dredging up the spoils that are contaminated, putting it on the ground. And as we discussed before, they thought that would have an elevation of four feet. They're finding that they got more material than that. If they only had that piece of property, the Atlantic Wood property, would go up eight feet. And so we have an opportunity not only to clean up the site, but to keep that elevation low. low. And she'll show you.
So in talking with Randy Sturgeon with the EPA, and it was funny, when Randy called, he said, "Nita, you're with the city now." I said, "Yeah, this project seems to follow me." And so we came up with a proposal, and Randy, pretty much, I have to give him a lot of credit, they really want this property. The EPA needs the additional land for the spoils from the Elizabeth River that are part of the Atlantic Wood Superfund site. The school site provides that needed space that John had mentioned, and it will take about a year for the EPA to prepare the property to accept the spoils. So if they started now with all of the work that they have to do, they wouldn't be able to put the spoils on the property until November. The schools, in this proposal, will have to sign an access agreement with the EPA. And the EPA will actually clean up the property at no cost to the schools or to the city and turn it into a brownfield, which is absolutely fantastic. Yes, I didn't think anyone would disagree with that.
Have we tried to market it?
That burns it.
Right. The city would maintain the property per the EPA requirements, and these are minimal requirements in terms of maintaining it. And when I say maintaining, it's the maintenance, cutting the grass once a year, twice a year, reseeding as required. If there's any damage to the berm, we would just make a repair to the berm. And also, any ditches, we would keep the ditches clean. So it's basically stormwater work.
Before you go, this is the answer to your question, have we tried to market? It's not ours to market yet. What this does, this keeps us out of the chain of title, and I think that's important. It passes it from, if we can free up the deed restrictions from the federal government, which is a challenge, because remember, there's no H E W anymore. That department got separated. And so it's going to take some time to work it out, to free up the deed restrictions. At the same time, EPA then uses the property for the landfill. They take down the buildings, clear it, start putting spoils on there. And then when all is said and done, when the deed is correct, when the landfill is finished and the stuff is encapsulated, then it's conveyed to our P P I C, which then can market the property. And you end up with a piece of property that can be developed under certain restrictions and be much like the Superfund site off of Effingham Street.
And we have spent it out.
You came from the school, so is all this, all this embedded with the schools?
I'm getting to that. I actually, you have two documents that were handed out. One is, these were given to Dr. Stuckwish, and they will be used for the board this Thursday. It's a, just a briefing, and then as well as a draft of the consent to enter the property.
How long will the process take for the EPA before they return it to your P P I C?
Four years. Clean up. Here's the schedule, one slide ahead. If you look at it, and here was the reason why we needed to deal with consent for agreement as opposed to waiting for the deed to get cleaned up. The EPA really has to have this property sometime in October, at the very latest November. We need to clear this up in October so they can begin their engineering studies. It takes them about a year to get ready to prep the property, then demo the buildings. They will start in spring of 2014 with the demo of the buildings as the plan. By November of 2014, they'll start the remediation of that, those spoils from the river, and it should be turned back, back over by 2017.
When does your SIPS, oh, sorry.
Go ahead. I'll wait till finish.
When does your SIPS contract end?
2018.
2018.
January, December?
January.
Do you feel certain that we'll get the deed?
January 2018 is when the use and support agreement...
January what?
January 24, 2018.
It's my birthday.
That's a good day.
Mr. Edmonds asked the question, do we feel like we will have any problems getting the deed cleaned up? And I wouldn't want to.
We shouldn't. It's just a real time-consuming process at the federal level. If we were dealing with anyone other than the federal government or the railroad, we would be able to get it done quickly.
Okay. And then finally...
And let me tell you, I mean, this is a good deal all the way around, because if the EPA was not doing this, first, the site would not be cleaned up. My recommendation to you is not take the site until it's clean. When we go out and buy property, we need to make sure that it's environmentally safe. Second, we don't need to have an eight-foot hill there in this area that makes a challenge for development. And so you'll end up with a lower elevation that's spread out over a larger area that kind of gives a good platform for development. So punchline, we just want to make sure that you're comfortable with this. You ready?
Well, I do have one more point to make, and that is, right when we were going through the consent order, I was working, literally working with Mr. Sturgeon on the phone, and the, he was furloughed, the government shut down. It was on Monday, and Randy, Randy said, "Nita, this is the best we can get you is a draft, and I put this together." So hopefully, this does not slow it up. The issue will be the standstill due to the government shutdown. And literally on Monday, I just have a very unofficial draft. This will be an EPA document, which is a consent to agree, that will go directly from the EPA to the school. So that's the only holdup for October, for us completing the...
Now, you've had back-to-back briefings on this area. At your last council meeting, we gave you a status report on the plan that EPA financed that's in draft form. And now Bob Baldwin has that. That's a master plan for the future of all that property at Paradise Creek, Burton's Point. And when we say all that property, not only standing with your back to the bridge and looking to the RDF plant, but what happens when you go right or left at that intersection next to the power plant? You can visualize that quarter, if you went left, going victory over the 264. We need to have a plan for that. If you took a right and come around the shipyard, back over to George Washington Highway, we need a plan for that. So this is all good. You've seen a macro, and now here's a micro vision of the area. And so if you're comfortable, my recommendation is that we continue to march in this direction.
Yeah.
It's a win-win.
It's a good recommendation.
Okay, this is all we have, Mr. Vice Mayor.
Anybody have anything, Councilmen? All right, we're adjourned.